I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission for the Town of Gilbert and for May 6, 2015. Could I get a roll call?
Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Vice Chairman Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Brent Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Jennifer Whitman. Alternate Todd Hall.
Can I get approval of the agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to present or to approve the agenda as presented with the following changes to move items 14 and 15 to the consent agenda.
Okay, and...
I'm sorry, item number 14 is GP 15-3 and item number 15 is Z 15-04.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Sipple and a second from Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. That takes us to communications from citizens at this time. Members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to response in to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Does anyone here like to speak in this manner? Seeing none, I'll move forward. We'll have to recess to the Planning Commission and convene as the Board of Adjustment. So, I guess it threw me for a loop because I didn't realize we're going to the Board of Adjustment. And so convene as Board of Adjustment and then open for to check the minutes. Okay. Can I consider approval of the minutes for a Board of Adjustment for April 1, 2015?
So moved. Second.
So I have a motion for approval of the minutes for the Board of Adjustment, April 1, 2015, by Vice Chairman Sipple, second by Commissioner Blazer, Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The pass is 6-0. And so adjourn the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Planning Commission. As a public hearing consent agenda, consent public hearing items will be heard in one public hearing. After consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion at the request of a member of the Planning Commission or staff. An item may be removed or from consented calendar and may be heard acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent hearing and approved under a single motion. So our consent agenda today is item number 10, which is UP 15-01, a Verizon cell tower located at 911 South Lindsay Road. Item number 11, which is UP 15-03, which also is a Verizon cell tower located at 2570 South Val Vista Drive. And the two items that were moved to consent, which is item 14, GP 15-03, which is the Gilbert skilled nursing facility. And then joining case is Z 15-07, Gilbert skilled nursing facility. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including items UP 15-01, UP 15-03, GP 15-03, and Z 15-07.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Chairman Sipple and a second from Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain from items 14 and 15?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one point clarification. Did the motion include Z 15-01? I thought I heard that.
003.
Z 15-03?
Yeah, it's supposed to be...
No, we didn't. You were asking about item number 13?
Yes, I thought I heard that included.
No, it was not. Could have been, but was not.
Okay, thank you. I apologize.
Okay, so we have a...
Mr. Chair, you could still add that to the consent agenda if you so desire.
Would we mind moving case or item number 13-Z 15-01 to the consent agenda, which is the accelerated Gilbert power? Does anybody have an issue of adding that to the consent agenda?
I don't.
Okay. So do modify the...
I'll amend my motion to...
Firstly, we'd need a new motion moving it to the consent agenda, then you could amend your motion approving the consent agenda with the new item.
So moved. I'll take a stab at it.
Okay, Commissioner, yes.
I move that we move case number Z 15-01 to the consent agenda tonight.
Do I have a sec? Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Bloomfield, a second from Vice Chairman Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that moves it to the consent agenda.
All right, Your Honor?
Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including UP 15-01, UP 15-03, Z 15-01, GP 15-03, and Z 15-07.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman Sipple and a second from Commissioner Blazer for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
With an abstention for GP 15-03 and Z 15-07.
Thank you. Any opposed? Passes 6-0 and 5-0. All right, that moves us to the non-consent agenda. This is a public hearing for a non-consent. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support or in opposition to a public hearing may do so. If you wish to comment on the public hearing, you must fill a public comment card form indicating the item number that you wish to be heard on. And once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. So the public forms, we have some here, but if you needed to fill one out and wanted to speak or have your information on the record, they're on the back table. So that brings us to item number 12, UP 15-04, which is the Fox cigar bar. Ms. McCarty.
Good evening again, Chairman, members of the commission. Nicole McCarty with the Planning Department. I'm here to talk about Fox cigar bar and their use permit requests. This was before you back in April, and we are back to go over it again and go over some of the changes we've made to the proposal. So just to recap, this is on the northwest corner of Val Vista Drive and Williams Field Road. It is an existing business in the shopping center zoning district. The site does is adjacent to a single-family eight zoning. This is a non-traditional business. Smoking lounge falls into that category in our zoning code, and therefore there's a requirement for 1,000 feet between non-traditional businesses and 13, 20 feet between schools. This business does meet both of those requirements. The patio area is about 75 feet to the residential property line in the rear, about 95 feet to the nearest house. Just a summary of the existing business, it does occupy two tenant suites and a patio area in the middle in an existing commercial center, approximately 4,800 square feet. It's a smoking lounge, also offers tobacco sales and alcohol sales. It's open 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM on the weekends. To go over the history of the business a little bit, and this was kind of a point of discussion last time, so I'll try to be as clear as I can with this because it has gone through some changes over the years. The original business is in Suite 105, which is the suite highlighted in blue. This was Casa Fuma, the tobacco retail store. In 2008, there was no use permit required for smoking lounges. Their lease agreement, we found, did include the use of the patio area highlighted here with the lines. So they did use that back in 2008 as the part of the tobacco lounge. Meanwhile, while they're operating, in 2009, the town passed a code amendment requiring use permits for smoking lounges, so effectively putting Casa Fuma into a non-conforming status, although it didn't really affect their business as long as they continued operating. In November 2010, Fox cigar bar took over the operations of the business, received their CFO, and continued operating as the smoking lounge, including on the patio area. In 2012, there were some unpermitted patio improvements done to the area. This includes the shade canopy that's seen in the picture here. Heaters were placed out on the patio, water misters, TVs, and also pedestrian gates. So in 2012 is really when the patio was formally taken over with improvements. However, it was used at the original with the original business before the non-conforming Then in 2014, early 2014, an expansion went further into the members lounge, which is Suite 104. This expansion is what triggered the need for a use permit. So to go over the public input summary, we did receive emails and correspondence from 11 property owners. You've received all of that. There was also public testimony at the hearing on April 1. The primary concern was smoke in the yards and in their homes, and additionally, just concern about being able to utilize their outdoor space, and concerns about health, and also some about noise and loitering in the parking lot after hours. So after that hearing, staff did meet with the owner and his legal representation, and we decided on a list of effectively conditions or just different mitigation techniques that the owner was willing to entertain. We proposed possibly having a voluntary neighborhood meeting, especially reaching out to the neighbors specifically who had contacted us. That meeting was held last weekend. I know Chairman Ailer and I both attended. There were five neighbors that attended. A lot of those were the same neighbors who wrote in. Overall, the owner, Mitchell Fox, shared his proposed changes. By that time, he had an engineered study done, and he shared that study with them. And the neighbors expressed their confidence really in both the techniques and also in Mitchell to, you know, to hold true to what he was saying he was going to do. They're happy to work with him, and they're really pleased in his response to the concerns and being proactive in reaching out to have this neighborhood meeting. So overall, the feeling has been that neighborhood is more supportive, knowing that there's going to be these mitigation techniques put in place. So just to go through the conditions that are in your staff report, there are eight conditions of approval that staff is recommending to ensure that the smoking lounge does not impact the neighborhood. Condition number one and two relate to just obtaining the necessary design review permits and billing permits that are pending for the work. Condition number three is really kind of the meat of the discussion, and that was to have the tobacco odor mitigation plan prepared by a qualified professional. I'm definitely not a qualified professional to know if this plan will work. And so as a follow-up, I think we would like to discuss, and I have discussed with the owner, the implementation of this plan and making sure that there is follow-up, that there's analysis done, that it's working. You guys have a copy of the plan. I think you'll see it is a preliminary plan. It's they're hopeful it will work, but nobody really knows until it's installed how it's going to affect the area. It is unique that it's a very open space area. So these are just some of my suggestions and how and my expectations of the owner, of how staff would like to see it be followed up, documented, and routine maintenance of the system. So the owner is aware that the plan is not the condition was not just to do the plan, but also to implement the plan and to follow through with that. Just to go over the plan that is, you know, again preliminary and what the engineer has come up with, this is the patio area, kind of the covered area. There would be four, they call them Smoke Eater. I think it's the brand of the system. It's a smoke removal machines mounted underneath the area. There would be two wall-mounted fans. This is the rear, so this is the residential in the back. Two wall-mounted fans blowing the air, blowing the smoke effectively this way. And again, because of Smoke Free Arizona laws and because this is an existing commercial center out here, effectively cannot just blow the smoke out into the commercial area either, so there's also an exhaust system being planned for this area to, once it goes, if it gets to that area, to be sucked up and removed through the roof-mounted exhaust fan. So moving on, condition number four would be to raise the wall, which is the rear wall to the patio, and the residential again is behind this, to raise that wall from seven feet to 10 feet, hopefully impacting both noise and smoke concerns. Condition number five would be to replace the gates that are located on either side of the wall. Currently, they're mesh kind of see-through material to make those solid. Also, to label those for emergency access only, which hopefully would reduce the number of clients or patrons coming in and out, and just help alleviate some of the noise and loitering issues as well. Condition number six would be to add additional landscaping in the 25-foot wide easement, specifically right behind the, well, that thing quit again, but right behind the area where the patio is, where the smoke is most, you know, concentrated. Condition number seven, this relates to the noise concerns that we heard from the neighborhood. We've just put out a proposal that at the property line, the neighbor, it would be reduced to 45 decibels by 10:00 PM on weekdays and 12:00 AM on weekends. Again, noise is something that is measurable. It is something I think the neighbors can point to, be, you know, be sure that it's going to be toned down at that time. And condition number eight is to label this area most adjacent to the rear patio entrances as employee-only parking, again hoping to alleviate some of the traffic back there. And so with all those eight conditions, staff is recommending approval of the Fox cigar bar. And the owner and his legal representation are here tonight to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this time?
I have two.
Vice Chairman Sipple?
Nicole, we know what type of landscaping. Are we gonna, we're talking trees or are we talking, you know, ground cover?
We are talking trees.
Trees, okay. And you had talked about, not only is it the plan, but the implementation of the plan. What will we be able to do if the plan isn't implemented to fidelity like we've requested?
Chairman and Commissioner Sipple, I do think that it is part of the condition that staff is going to be looking for. Furthermore, I think commission could request staff to come back and give you reports on what we are hearing and what we are communicating with Mitchell for, I don't know how often you would want that, but we could, we could give you reports. Basically, you know, he will always have the use permit on his business. There's always code compliance as one route, and there's always the revocation process if these conditions aren't met. So in the interim, in the short term, I think staff is going to be working with them to follow up and to make sure this is working for the neighborhood and also working with the neighbors. And we'd be happy to come and give reports back to the commission if that's something you'd be interested in.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole.
Any other questions? Commissioner Moody?
I just want to make sure as we look at the recommendations, and maybe these are just nuanced words, but I look at number three, and it talks about line three. It says, "Other features that eliminate odor trespass at the residential property line." That seems like a fairly high standard to hold as a, as a condition, especially if we're going to be coming back in the future and checking to say, "Has the odor been eliminated?" I don't know if we tinker with that language. Does that still meet staff's intentions with having worked with the owner and the neighbors? Is there some other language? And I look at, it's the associated mechanical engineer letter that was distributed from Paul earlier today. It talks about effectively reducing the passage of nuisance tobacco. And maybe that's a more of a term of art or a threshold that can truly be met as opposed to eliminating.
Chairman, Commissioner Moody, I do think, again, odor is something that cannot necessarily be measured at the property line. So it is, I guess, strong language as compared to, you know, when you can go out there with a decibel reader and measure the noise. So I think the intent is still there to not let this, you know, odor impact the neighbors, if you'd be more comfortable with that, because there isn't really anything we can hold to measure at the property line anyways. That would be my suggestion, that I would be comfortable with that, yes.
You'd be comfortable with us softening some of that language a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
I have a question.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Nicole. We have a question for Commissioner Blazer.
Can you remind me what the revocation process is for a CUP?
I might turn to our attorney to kind of walk you through that if you don't mind.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Mr. Blazer, revocation can be initiated by citizen request, by staff request, or from a member of the Planning Commission or town council. It is a part of a public hearing that's noticed, and as you may recall, we, it would be a hearing much like we're having now, where the applicant would have a chance to come in and respond to the revocation request, and the neighborhood would also have a chance to comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Could you come forward and your name and city of or town or residence for the record?
Commissioners, if I could, my name is Eric Lynch. I'm legal representative of the owner, Mitchell Fox, who's here, Fox cigar bar. He's sitting there with the gray shirt, along with a co-counsel of mine, and Samantha, who's a manager at the establishment. I am a resident of the city of Scottsdale. I'm an attorney based in Phoenix with Paul Zanelli, PC law firm. I thank all of you commissioners for your service to the community. It's a great valuable service, and I thank the planning people for working with us throughout this process, the condition, on the conditional use permit. I also thank Nicole for her presentation, which hits the issues very nicely. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the people of the community, Gilbert Ranch, who have frankly spoken to us about some of their concerns. And I believe that my owner, Mitchell, is absolutely committed to meeting their concerns and with the measures he's presented, which in aggregate are quite expensive and significant. But it's important to him to be a good neighbor, and part of that is following through, not just quote-unquote saying he'll do it, but actually doing it. And we think this should be granted, consistent with the recommendation made by staff. Gentlemen, if there are any questions I could answer, I'd be very happy to.
Commissioner Blazer?
Have plans been submitted for permit for the modifications to the facility, the modifications that we've talked about?
They will be submitted within a timeframe. There were discussions with the staff about submitting those, and of course, we will submit those.
Can you speak to the timeframe?
Hopefully, within 60 days, if that's workable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Cavaney?
So I heard Nicole mention, and I don't, I didn't hear a resolution to it, but with regards to ongoing testing for sound and smell, I don't know, and maybe we need to establish that here tonight, but should it be a regular period or is it just upon citizen complaint? I think, what would be your thoughts on the best way to manage that? What would you be willing to do so that we can discuss that? I think something needs to be in place, not only so that the neighbors can be sure that it's being implemented, but also for your protection, so that you're maybe not doing it too often, right? So just what are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, Smoke Free Arizona and the testing that's out there pretty much measures smoke. It doesn't necessarily measure odor or deal with odor. Odors can be detectable. There's a lot of debate back and forth whether there's any concrete way to quote-unquote eliminate, as Commissioner Moody has indicated, completely or measure absolutely odor levels. I believe a nose test certainly works as well, too. I certainly think we can get our engineering team to look into any ways they believe they have. I mean, I've talked to consultants in the past who've told me it can be tested, and we certainly will propose that if Commissioner thinks that's necessary to do, to protect everybody involved, the neighbors and our business.
Yeah, I do think there should perhaps be some language to have either a regular program, even if it's just an annual checkup to make sure they're following the rules, or if it is more regular. Or it could be by citizen call. You know, if somebody calls and expresses a concern, maybe then we initiate it. But I could see how maybe that, if you do have a disgruntled neighbor who doesn't fill your meeting now, that could be maybe too regular. So I just think it might be safe to put something in place so that we know what the program is in the event of ongoing concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll certainly look into that. We'll speak to our engineering team and come up with something that we think makes sense to meet your concerns as well as the neighbors.
Okay. Well, I think we're more looking for a timeframe. If we get approval, we're looking for a section of time, not a, not a way of doing it, because we can be talking about that. But I guess my questions get to, I guess, the beginning of the establishment. In 2008, it was Casa Fuma with the, in agreement, and then was there a period of time between of closure of doors between Casa Fuma and Fox cigar bar?
I believe, I believe it was a seamless transition from, right, 2008 to 2009 when Fox came in? So it was a continuous use of that patio area, 105? Correct.
Okay. And then I understand the lease agreement talks about the patio. I still have a little concern of a lease agreement doesn't mean you had rights. It just means internally you had the right. But what do you have to show that you were using the patio at that point in time other than a lease agreement?
Sure. We've submitted two declarations on behalf of the continuing use from 2008 to the present. One of them is by a manager, who was a manager in 2008 forward, and it's still a manager now at Mr. Fox's establishment, which talks about the continuous use of the patio in the same manners today, of course, without the physical improvements. And there is also something, a declaration that was submitted by Rami Mohammed. Mohajin Mohammed? Okay, I think it's Rami Mohammed, who was the leasing agent for Casa Fuma and also Mr. Fox on the property, and he attests to that as well.
Okay, so an employee of the company and the person who's leasing to the company?
Yes, who are familiar with the continuous operation from 2008 to present of the patio.
Okay.
As well, Commissioner Chair, there are also customers we could get. There's several dozen customers who have been consistent from 2008 forward, who still frequent the business, who can also attest to the consistent use.
Of the patio?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Blazer?
I maybe should have asked Nicole this. She's, Nicole, you had said, you had said that it was Casa Fuma and it was tobacco sales. Maybe the user can speak to this, too, but was it a lounge? Did people loiter, for lack of a better term, hang out there and, and smoke?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think it was phrased a little different, maybe it was, our code a little different. It was more retail sales and entertainment use.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the public. I have four cards here. I will just read off the top and go from there. Tom Flowers doesn't say if you wish to speak.
I will know.
Yeah, it says Nicole has your comment, so, okay. Thank you. Brenda Buzzard wishes to speak, and as opposed to the item?
I'm sorry, last month when I was here also, I ended up having questions. Can you all hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you. Could you, could you just state your name and town or residence?
Brenda Buzzard, and what else?
Oh, your town or residence? Just for the record, just where do you live?
I live on Granite Street, 235, South Granite Street.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Okay, so like last time, I have some questions that have come to mind through the discussions that have come up. the discussions that have come up. One thing I'd like to ask, because you were really asking a lot of questions about the continued use. Can you explain if that's good or bad for the Fox Cigar Bar, if they had continued use since 2008? Or is that bad that they've been out of compliance that long?
I will go to Linda for that one.
Thank you for being here. The only reason why a continued use is a factor is that the town modified its code in the year 2005, and then in 2009, we amended it to create specific separation requirements for smoking lounges. At the time that Casa Fuma began its business, we didn't have that regulation in 2008. And then, when Mr. Fox purchased the business, it was a continuation of the business, it wasn't abandoned. So therefore, it was a continuous legal use, even though new regulations were created after he purchased it.
Okay.
And then, the issue that you're talking about, being not in compliance with the permit, is the patio was improved, and Mr. Fox is working with his team and our team at this time, to submit permits for the construction of the Ramada, and the other little improvements in the patio. And that's what he is continuing to get permits on, to make him fully legal to use the site.
Okay. Thank you. It kind of sounds to me like that's like grandfathering or something, like maybe if they had used it before, they can continue doing it. And I guess, what I would like to say is that last time, when we were here last month, I believe it was Mr. Fox himself, who said that, well, he has no idea how long the patio has been in use. And I believe in the document that we got, that was on the table, it's, in one place it said like four years, four and a half years, one place it said five years. So it just, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of, I don't know, it doesn't seem quite right to me, and I don't think that it's been as long as it has been set. But anyway, that's just my comment, I guess. And thank you for explaining that, because I didn't understand what that meant. And I do have, I'm sorry that I do have a couple more.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the findings of fact, just personally, for somebody else to make a decision, and I know you all have to make the decisions for us, but to say that it's not detrimental to our health or welfare, I just, I find that really sad, and almost offensive, but, I mean, this is us living there, and, you know, to say that the smoke and the noise and the odor isn't going to change our lives, and it's not going to be bad for us, I can't One of my other frustrations, and this might go back to that grandfathering thing, is that we, you know, we've been living there, assuming that everything was running properly, and that they had right permits, not knowing that we could complain about something like that, when all this time, there really hasn't been the permits that were required. And I think that that's, you know, bad for us. We've really put up with a lot, not knowing that we didn't have to. I feel like anyone who doesn't smoke, or if you, even if you do smoke, but you don't necessarily enjoy the smell of smoke in your home, I don't think that you would approve this, because you wouldn't want to live in a home that has smoke. It's not, it's not nice. And one of the things I was telling one of my neighbors tonight was that, and I'll just tell you, just, I promise it'll be really brief, but just a quick personal thing, this happened just a couple weeks ago. I go to bed about 10 o'clock, have the windows and doors open, because it's nice, no smoke, I'm so happy, I go to bed. My husband comes in about 1:00 in the morning, and he's like, "Why do you have all this open? There's smoke all over the place. What are you doing?" And it's like, "Well, it was perfectly nice when I went to bed," you know? And so here I am, breathing in smoke and stuff. So, you know, very frustrating how it can just kind of creep upon you, you don't even know it, and, you know, you go to bed and think everything's great. On the, I'm sorry, the plan that Nicole presented, there was two things that I wanted to make comment on. One was where the landscaping was listed, and it had the green, and I don't know if that's like set in stone, and that's the only thing that's recommended. But that only covers two homes, and my home is, I think, just one north of that. Well, my home gets a lot of smoke, and then if you go up one more house after me, there's a street there, and there's other people who live right there on that street, and they might even get even more smoke than I do. They have two-story homes, and I don't, I just have a single-level home. And they get even more, and so it just doesn't seem like, you know, if they're going to put in landscaping and trees to try to block out the smoke, I think it needs to go a lot further than what was on that plan. The other thing that I wanted to make mention of is the, the plan where it was showing the fans was, I believe they were 16-inch fans, and I'm definitely not an expert, I don't claim to be, but just considering an outside area, and wind and air, it's just hard to believe that two fans that, I don't know, 15 feet apart or something, are really going to be able to make the smoke not go up and over the walls and into our homes. It's hard for me to believe. And then, I wanted to also make a comment. If I understand it correctly, and I apologize, Commissioner, is it Moody?
Sure, yeah.
I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce it right. You may not have pronounced my last name right, either, if you had to say it. When you were asking about the verbiage to be changed, that sounds to me like you're asking for it to be reduced, to be less than what was already in there, and I just, I would hope that you all would not approve that. I mean, we want it eliminated. We don't want smoke, we don't want odor in our homes. And so just to say that they might have to have less odor or less smoke coming into our homes, I don't think is good enough. And I think that may have been all, I guess that the only other thing that I'll just say in closing, because I've taken enough time, is that I don't know of any of these measures. I appreciate his good faith dealings in trying to get things that will reduce this and help us. I really, truly do appreciate that. It's hard for me to imagine that it would really help, and it's hard for me to imagine that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be exposed to the odor and the smoke without it being just completely enclosed and no use of the outside patio. I know that's like a waiting game, and we'll have to wait. And then something else I just thought of, you know, does it really have to take 60 days to submit a plan? I mean, if you all approve the permit, and they have to submit plans, it looks like they already kind of have it. I mean, can't we speed up the process a little bit? That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any questions? Thank you. That brings us to Julie Kaplinger.
Name Julie Kaplinger, Gilbert resident.
Thank you.
Welcome. In regards to what Ms. McCarthy said, there was an open house that the Fox Bar put on on Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. Five people represented the 11 that were there. Six of us weren't represented, and we're not happy. Just to bring up some of those things, as Commissioner said, how do you monitor odor and smoke like that? I am an owner of the two-story house, so first of all, I'd like to say, with respect to Mr. Fox, you know, we do support Gilbert businesses, we do support small businesses, they're important to our community. However so is the health of our residents. So when I walk into my laundry room, it smells like cigars. When I go to bed at night and walk into my room, it smells like cigars. And it's usually from Thursday through Sunday that's potent. I would open my doors to anyone that is reviewing, how do we monitor odor? How often should we? Walk into my home, you're welcome to come in and smell it. When we take a walk at night, come in in the evenings, that's when it's there. So how are trees, what's the number of trees do we need? How are the fans? Everybody knows, if you smoke, it goes up. It's everywhere. When we go walking at night, it's not just in Brenda's area, which is the whole line in the back, we're coming across this way. It's like a cloud. I mean, there's many times you walk out, it looks like a bomb went off. That's how much smoke's out there. So, yeah, we do need to know, how is it going to be monitored? How often? How big are these fans? How many do we need? I mean, these things really do have to be looked at, because we're getting it bad, really bad. And so we want to know, okay, how much of a wall is really going to help? Can that, is there scientific background on that? Can there be proof? Because, again, smoke goes up. I mean, these, you know, we're asking for you guys, before you approve this, to really take the time to look at it, and come to our homes, do whatever you need, to see what we go through.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Okay. And the last card I have is Brian Sims.
Not to reiterate what my neighbors have said, but as some of the board members have already pointed out, noise control is something that can be measured, certain distance with a decibel meter. Although that's an annoyance, I think health is a much greater issue. I have two daughters at home, both of them on weekends, particularly like Ms. Kaplinger said, Thursday through Sunday nights, particularly Friday and Saturday nights. Waiting for resident complaints, I honestly, I don't think is going to do any good. It's going to be when they have the most patrons there, when the most patrons are smoking, that somebody will have to come out and tell. I think it's a common sense issue. If any of you have anybody that is a neighbor behind you, or a business established behind you, just think about it from a common sense point of view. You have fans, and you have dozens of patrons that are smoking cigars. I don't want that in my house. I don't want to be accosted when I come home to someplace that is supposed to provide solitude for me and my family. I love Gilbert, I love the town atmosphere. I'm pro-small business, and I applaud Mr. Fox for all of his recommendations to mitigate this. Smoke is not something that you can eliminate. To what Julie said, come into any of our homes. I do have a two-story house. We used to thoroughly enjoy, as time cools off in the fall and the spring, to open up your windows, to get some air in there, some circulation. We can no longer do that. Anecdotal evidence, fact number four that's on the sheet, I disagree with that wholeheartedly. My daughters had a pool party Saturday night. Since the April 1st meeting, there's been five nights that we've had to close the windows. That's how bad the smell is. Saturday night, my daughter's pool party, she had six friends. Four of those girls asked, "Does your dad smoke?" This is in a pool party outside. So again, please, board members, think about it from a common sense perspective. Would you like a business behind you that has dozens of patrons with fans blowing smoke into your homes? Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant?
And having heard all these items, I wanted to raise a couple things in response, and I think a couple might get to what Nicole would talk about. As to the landscaping, I don't think the landscaping video was correct. I think there was a showing of grass in the gully, or the area between, behind the business and the homeowners. Actually, the landscaping that was talked about with the planning people is, in fact, trees behind the back wall. So I don't think there's this idea of foresting the entire neighborhood. That's not correct. As far as smoke removal, smoke-free Arizona, and the systems that are out there, as well as noise, there are measurable ways to deal with these things. And we've had an engineering preliminary report, which tells us, we believe we can manage this stuff. First and foremost, the neighbors are important to us. Mr. Fox cares about his neighbors. He wants them to not have any complaints whatsoever. Will it be perfect? Is everything 100% guaranteed? Who can do that? The fact is, our engineers have told us that these things will work, they will make substantial benefit. And if testing, going into people's homes after these are, these systems are in place, which we are going to put them in place, if that shows something different, so be it. But there are ways to test this, we are committed to this plan, these are industrial strength smoke eaters and removers, it recirculates air. These kinds of measures indoors, at a lesser scale, in Suites 104, which is, was the initial reason for this conditional use permit, and the indoor shop at 105, they're amazingly effective. Mr. Fox has owned smoking lounges for years. There are methods to deal with smoke and odor. And we believe these systems, industrial strength systems, will work to deal with the patio concerns that the neighbors have. And those things are measurable. So we will meet that challenge, and I must say that we were very happy with the fact that when we had an open house, we had a number of very supportive neighbors. Some have written to us and told us, "Hey, we think what you're doing is great, we like your business, and we're with you." But we do understand there are complaints, and we want to meet those complaints. And we think that this plan that we have put forward preliminarily, which we plan on implementing, is in fact going to meet those concerns. And gentlemen, in light of the comments that were made, and the things I've just said, I would open up to further questions as well.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Yeah, Commissioner Kavner?
Can you, and maybe you don't have the understanding of these, as I don't, but can you explain how these smoke eater units work? Do you know how they function in any way?
A little bit.
Because I don't, I've never seen them, I haven't dealt with this before, so.
I've seen them in many establishments, seen them operate, but I think Mitchell would probably be better at giving the exacts.
Hello. The smoke eaters basically suck in the smoke, the air, to filter, there's a charcoal filter on all the smoke eaters, and that's what zaps the smell. But all the air goes into it, and it cleans the air, and then kind of spits it out again. That's, you know, for lack of a better way to describe it, that's generally how they work.
And so then, periodically, you have to change those charcoal filters to purify them again, okay?
Normally, it's about every six months, inside, for an inside use. Outside, it's going to be every month.
Okay.
It's an expensive process.
Okay. So as I'm looking at this plan, and trying to be sensitive to the overall concern, I see that near the back fence, that is being raised, of course, and where the fans are installed, I think I'm understanding that the plan by the engineer here is to push any smoke towards the smoke eaters, right?
Correct.
To then get cycled, purified, and spit back out. I think one thing...
Those fans may get bigger, too.
Okay.
It just depends on what we come up with, with the final engineering study. I mean, if 16-inch fans aren't big enough, we're going to put bigger ones in there.
Bigger, right.
If four are required, I'll put four in there.
I think the thing that, and again, I'm no, I'm no smoke engineer, but it would seem to me, to one of the citizens' comments, is that maybe a more, maybe not bigger fans, but more fans, just along that perimeter, pushing, you know, not letting any breaches in that wall of air get through. I don't know, I think that might be...
It's very possible.
...a way to consider as you go to do this design. So I don't think that impinges what we do tonight necessarily, but would encourage you to consider more of a wall of fans. So I think I see the concept, I see what the point is here, to try to get it under that cover, get it near the smoke eaters, and not let it breach that perimeter to the, I think it's the west, so. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I hit the button a couple times. Ms. McCarthy, do you have anything further to add?
Thank you, Chairman. Commission members, just a couple points of clarification. The performance measure that staff is looking for with that condition is that it will not smell like smoke at the property line. That is the goal. When I wrote the staff report, that that finding of fact would only be met with these conditions. That definitely is the goal. Staff doesn't know what the extent of that condition entails yet. I don't think Mitchell knows what the extent of that entails yet, but this is just preliminary steps, hopefully, to get there. I do know the applicant understands the risk he's taking with the money he's investing to try to get there, and that it could not work. But I think he's chosen to stay in this, wants to stay in this location, wants to make it work in this location, and so he's flexible with what that condition means of how to get to that performance measure, which I hope is built into my condition. That was definitely the intent. Lastly, on the landscaping, staff does want to clarify that the trees, it was our impression that the trees would need to be planted in that landscape area. In order for it to be effective, it would need to be at the residential property line for both noise and possibly smoke mitigation. So that was the intent of that condition, so. So that was the intent of that condition, so.
Commissioner Cavanagh.
Can you just show us that landscape plan again, please? I forget what the layout looked like.
And again, this, it was a very general, the condition is written that staff would look into this in more detail. I apologize, I must have skipped it. That staff would look into the actual physical, what is out there, what is kind of dying, the sparse areas, the reason I highlighted that area in green is simply because from the aerial, it appears to be the most kind of sparse area.
Okay.
Getting there, Vin.
Sue it has yet to be fully developed, okay.
It's yet to be fully developed. The condition is phrased that staff will prove that, will look at that. Our landscape architect will be analyzing the densest trees we can fit in that width. So that is not a final plan by any means, so.
When it comes to measurement, because we've talked about, or citizens have talked about the second story, how are we looking at measuring would be from at the property line at like a six-foot height or behind the property line? Because ultimately, we're looking for, to protect our citizens and how we deal with the smoke at those lines. So I guess, what are, the, a thing that we're not understanding right now, I guess, is at the property line, smell of smoke, behind the property line?
Chairman Ayler, we, our intent was at the property line, yes, going forward with this. Again, staff doesn't have the perfect answer for the, how to measure the smell of smoke. Doesn't sound like there is one. But we would be open to your suggestion if it's whether the noise, or the noise and smell complaints, or again, routine discussions with the neighbors, routine updates. Those are kind of the two options that have been thrown out there. Staff's supportive of either one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Stan?
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant with this graphic. Is this then in line with what the applicant's expectations and agreement is?
I'll ask him to come up.
I think I helped create some of that confusion. I think I might have been mistaken with the application.
We're going to be doing landscape right behind the wall that I'm raising. We're also going to be doing landscape at the property line, the owner's property line. So it's going to be on both. It'll be done in both areas.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions before we close? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, before I close, I have a quick question here, I guess, from one of the community members.
All right, just seems once you sit down, you forget what you wanted to say. I apologize. Another thing I did have a question on, when we are still talking about noise as well. They said that they are going to have the area marked as employee parking. How is that going to be monitored? Because again, where my house sits adjacent from there, I'm just kind of curious because, you know, anybody could say that they're an employee and park there because we do hear a lot of Harley-Davidsons drive through there, which is fine, you know. But I want to know, how is that going to even be monitored? How is it going to know that that is an employee parking there or not, based on that? So what's the plan on that?
Okay, I guess an answer from the applicant or the staff. All right, thank you.
Very valid concern. Sam, one of the managers, the owner, Mitchell, and the folks that work there know who are employees. And they are behind the facility, the back patuary regularly. They can monitor and check, and will monitor and check to make sure that only employees are there. The idea for that obviously being, they don't want anybody else going there that might be interested in standing around and talking, loitering, or anything else. So it would be enforced by the management of the business. And we're pretty comfortable that that can easily be done because if you haven't parked there, somebody else did and you got to get towed. So that's how we enforce it.
But it'll also be designated and somehow with verbiage signage of something, okay.
It would. The understanding would be, it would be employee parking only and that would be enforced.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Close the public hearing and bring it back to the dithyrs for discussion. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Sippel?
I'll start this. So, you know, one of the things we have to look at are the facts, the facts of finding, right? And I appreciate Nicole working with the applicant. I appreciate the applicant coming in and presenting in front of us and I appreciate the community that came out. We've got letters as well that have been submitted to us. And when I look at the facts of finding, in particular, one and four, you know, one mentions the proposed use will not determine, be detrimental to health. And of number four, the proposed use as condition would not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. I can't get there. I can't get there on either one of them, I got to be honest with you guys. And so, you know, there's going to be a lot of discussion up here, I'm sure, about this one in particular. And so I just thought I would roll things out there and that's kind of where I'm at on this right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Blazer?
I'd like to say thank you to both parties. I certainly am an advocate for small business and business in general. And I love living in Gilbert, so I am sympathetic to both parties. I think the findings, as Vice Chair indicated, are focused, I think we've got to determine if the proposed use will not be detrimental to health, safety, or general welfare of persons living or working in the vicinity. And item four, it would not reasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. I appreciate all the efforts that have gone into mitigating the issue at hand. I read through in detail the plans, the engineering letter, even the statement from the manufacturer. There are a couple of points that I'd just like to highlight. And we're talking about a performance measuring also, to give the opportunity for the neighbors to measure, or somebody to measure odor. And I have a very sensitive nose and I think it becomes very subjective. What one person smells, the other person might not. I see that as a challenge. The engineering letter said, "We think this might work," basically. I take exception to that. I do not want to put my eggs in that basket. The units specified, there were two units talked about. One was a smoke eater unit called out on the plans. And then there was some engineering information about a different unit. Did a little bit of research on both. Both are indoor units. The manufacturer says that we think it might work outside. Again, putting our eggs in what we think, in a basket that we think might work. If we do come up with a timeframe or an approval of mitigating factors, I would suggest that there would be no more outdoor use till all of those mitigating factors are in place. And I have a little bit of experience with exhaust systems. And for whatever reason, exhaust systems are very temperamental in a controlled environment. I can't imagine when the wind shifts, what that will do to an exhaust system. So I have zero faith in the fact that this mitigation will work. The only way to be sure is to put it all in place and test it. And if we do that, I would still want the neighbors to have input and additional measures to have to be implemented to ensure that there are no smells that come over that wall. Sorry, I'm reading my notes here. So I have a real difficult time. I'm not, I guess I could be persuaded, but I feel like whatever measurement plan is in place to measure the performance of the mitigation plan down the road, to verify that it's working and in place, has got to involve the neighbors and buy-in from the neighbors. If they don't agree, that if they can still smell it, then we've got an issue. And it would have to be mitigated. The other question I would have, and maybe it's for the attorney, is I think in this section, a document was signed, the Proposition 207, about the property. Diminution, thanks for the help on that word, of property values. What is the purpose of that and how does that maybe play into this? If you could shed some light on that?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blazer, Prop 207 waiver is a standard form that applicants sign with virtually any zoning or use permit request. Prop 207 provides a right of action for a property owner whose property value is lessened through a municipal rezoning or change of land use regulations. I haven't had a chance to really sit and analyze how that might apply here, but typically, when it is a, an applicant is requesting the rezoning, a Prop 207 doesn't really come into play. That is to say, I would have to analyze this in more detail to make a finalized conclusion on that.
Does the person submitting for rezoning signs that though, correct?
Correct.
And takes on that liability in general?
Correct. Commissioner, I think it's worth noting for the benefit of the entire commission, the request today is for the expanded use into the new suite, a use permit to the new suite and then for any intensified use on the patio. It would appear that the applicant has evidence supporting non-conforming use in the older suite and to some extent on the patio. So even were the permit to be denied, it would appear that the applicant has evidence that some smoking use is for, to use, the citizens were grandfathered for the patio.
And that's by the two declarations?
The two declarations on the lease. That would be, that would be a question that, evidence that the commission could weigh. It would be a finding of fact the commission could make based on the evidence presented, on whether there was legal non-conforming use of the patio. And it would be up to you to determine what weight to give those declarations, the lease, et cetera.
That's all I have.
Oh, okay. Anyone? Commissioner Mudi?
I guess my perspective on this is that it's a existing small business that has functioned in this manner for somewhere on the order we think of six or seven years. That it does now find itself in a non-conforming use. I certainly hear the neighbors' concerns. But as far as this business owner knew, there were no previous complaints lodged up until we started having this discussion. This came to us last month. The owner voluntarily withdrew, even though staff actually, I think, recommended approval for this last month. The applicant withdrew and has voluntarily come back with a lot of improvements. I think we have a situation here where we have an opportunity to improve an existing situation that will likely persist whether we vote it up or down. It may persist in a different way, but it'll persist. But here we have an opportunity with a small business owner looking to work with his neighbors to make it better for everyone. And I don't think it's the last bite at the apple for everybody. There's going to be opportunities to come back. So I think we have to, in my mind, we have to give this a chance for success, not just kill it because of skepticism that success is impossible. And that's kind of my perspective.
Thank you. Commissioner Bloomfield?
Commissioner Mudi, I appreciate those comments. I, if I were a resident in the home behind him, I would not appreciate, I would not appreciate that, you know, and I, but at the same time, he bought the, he bought the business. It was a conforming use. And I agree, it will continue to exist in some form, most likely. And I appreciate the fact that the owner's come forward voluntarily in an effort to be a good neighbor. And that hasn't been lost on me. I think if I understood counsel correctly, he has a right to be there and the business to operate in some form and function as it had, as it did before. What we're trying to just, what we're trying to understand now is how much of that is going to be increased? And can he mitigate it to a point to bring it back to what it was prior to this new expansion, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bloomfield, counsel makes no opinion on the extent of the legal non-conforming use. I make the point only to let the commission know that that's a decision you are authorized to make when you weigh the evidence before you. And that it would appear that that's an argument that the applicant is making. But that's a conclusion that the commission can make.
Okay. That being said, I agree that while it may be temperamental and it may not be perfect at best, the proposed changes that are being made here are significant in terms of cost and investment and probably should be allowed to have a chance to be utilized. And then, because this is a conditional use permit, as long as the conditions are being met, the business can operate and function. If it's not being met, we get to revoke the permit and that part of the business isn't allowed to function. So that's my understanding. And so that's kind of the way I'm thinking. I'm kind of torn, but have to go there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cavanagh?
Thank you. So thank you to the neighbors. I know it takes a lot of courage to come down here and speak your opinions and share your thoughts. And we wish more citizens would do that, so thank you for coming down here. And thank you for the presentation, well done. My thoughts for this, first of all, I really appreciate the efforts made to come here. And I know that you have really won support of some of the neighbors who I know aren't here tonight to share that support. We certainly saw some concerns that we want to mitigate. We want everyone to be happy, we certainly do. And so I think my thoughts are these. First of all, I've been sitting here researching the ability to measure smell. And there is a way. There is a way. There's olfacto meters, believe it or not, that you can employ to measure smell. And although I know at this point, we haven't established a threshold of where that smell has to be at a certain level and what that level is, but I think we need to. And I think what we can do tonight is establish that that be done with staff to some level of agreeable amount. We've already agreed, I believe, on a decibel at property line. I don't know why we can't agree on some olfacto meter measurement at property line. But I think we do need to give this business owner a chance to show that he's willing to do this. He's put forth a good foot here. It isn't as clear and concise in solution as we often see at this stage. But again, we're dealing with some variables that maybe aren't typically addressed. So I think we give this a shot. I would agree that 60 days, if we could accelerate, that would be much appreciated. And I think the quicker we get this to a point where the neighbors are feeling the improvement, I think we're going to, you're going to win more support. And I think you're going to feel happier. So I think we need to give this business owner a chance to carry forward. I do agree with Commissioner Bloomfield's comments that, you know, he really, he's going to be here. He's only going to make it better by these efforts. And I think we just need to continue to help him get there. Now, the one thing that we didn't really discuss, and I think we can open this up to the commission maybe for more discussion, but I do believe that there should be a regular interval from our perspective, from the planning commission's ability to eventually consider a revocation, if necessary, of this use permit. We need a measurement. We need some empirical data upon which to say, "He either did or didn't get there." And so I do think we need to have some measurable threshold and some measurable period, whether that's every quarter, maybe every six months. But something that we can, staff can share with us and, "Look, you know, Fox Cigar Bar has submitted their report. Everything's still in line. It looks like they're meeting their obligation and we're good to go." And we can say, "We're good to go." But if they're not, then we can reconvene and say, "Look, guys, we've got a problem here and we need to, we need to address it." Or we got to pull back on the use permit. So I think we can discuss that interval. I think we probably need to discuss at what point the smell needs to be at some level. And I don't know that we're experts enough to establish that, so maybe we convey that homework to staff. But I'm in favor of supporting this business owner. I'm in favor of finding some measurements that help the homeowners get to a point of comfort so they're not impacted by this untypical residual of a business. So I will support though, as long as we put those in place.
Thank you. Well, and I'd also like to thank for the presentation, for the citizens to come out. I went to the nine o'clock meeting. I was a little late to it on Saturday. Got to see the establishment and I really can see where the owner is trying to, trying to put his best foot forward and make this thing work. In reading the report though, I don't, not per what the ownership is trying to do, but when I see a letter from an engineer saying, well, maybe, yeah, okay, well, we'll see. That doesn't, it doesn't fly for me. And so I'm a little worried about that. So how that establishes itself and how we do this testing, if we pass this measure, that is going to be a very key situation because I'm not an engineer either, but controlling that smoke and looking at establishment, you have that wall and if we raise the back wall and blow the air back, but smoke rises, I'm worried about the second stories because it'll loft over. So a lot of that's going to be hard testing. And if we can set an establishment point of review, I'm looking at if we pass this, I mean, initially, I mean, right away, 30 days. I mean, hopefully, you know, maybe we do it 60 because of establishment installment and it takes time to get building permits. But this controlling factor as it is right now, there is no control. So nothing that goes today, smoke wise, it just lofts where it goes. So.
When you're done?
Yeah. So, I mean, I'd like to have some discussion of timeframes and controls. I agree, we'll probably have to defer to staff for how do we deal with smoke controls, but I also worry about how we, how we measure at the property line and ask staff to look at that because I really want, the viewpoint of all this is to help our, our community that lives around this property. I, you know, I don't know where it'll go from there, but the direct neighbors are going to be the most affected by this. So I'd like to open up for timeframes and discussion of how the controls. So you wanted to?
If I could just say, may I? So I think setting a timeframe on when these improvements need to be implemented could be difficult because we don't know the lead times on ordering a smoke eater. We don't know the lead times on establishing all of these features. So I think that's going to be difficult. I think what we need to ask is that it be done as quickly as possible. And if we set an outside timeline, I think we'd just be guessing anyway. But I do think we can set regular intervals for testing and encourage that those reports be submitted regularly so that staff can review and make sure that we're still in line. But I would propose at this point, again, I don't know how much they're going to cost. And I want to be sensitive to the business owner on that too. And I don't know that they even know how much it's going to cost to get some of these tests. But maybe every six months we get a report, so.
Commissioner Blaser?
If we don't stipulate the timeframe, I think we request that there be no smoking on the patio till they get it addressed. How else do we put a sense of urgency? I mean, we've thrown out 60 days. Design could take 60 days, permit another four, they order, I mean, they order the material. I mean, it could, it could drag on pretty significantly. So that's just a comment. I think we need to consider that. Then, then testing. There's times when the wind is blowing up from the dairy and I smell it at my house. And there's other times, thankfully, most of the time, I don't smell it. The testing still is very subjective, I feel, because they could come out Monday morning, test it, the wind, there's no wind, and that Friday night, the wind's blowing and it's a totally different environment. So I hear what we're trying to say, but I don't know how we truly can control that. And I don't know, I just don't know that it's going to get the result that we're looking for.
Well, also in design controls, I was looking more of enclosing that backspace, not fully enclosed, but not letting that air go that way. A fan can control what it want, but if you went up 10 feet and then tied into that back area, it still gives you an open area. And that's more to design. But that's more of how you're going to control this, this smoking from going somewhere else. So that's why I read the indoor units used outside, I read the fans, being the controls, and, you know, I just don't know where that's going to be. I find that's gonna, it's really just guessing. And I want to give this small business a chance. So I just trying to figure out the best controls. Is it actually not allowing air movement to go that way? Commissioner Mudi?
So trying to hit on some of the points that I've been hearing. One, the, you know, shutting down all the outside smoking until, until things get fixed. I see this as an existing use, so I guess we'd have to come to an agreement that it wasn't a pre-existing use or so forth. So I don't, I'm challenged there with saying you have an existing use and you're proposing to improve the conditions, so we're now going to shut you down until you finish your improvements. I don't know what other business we would do that with, so I'm challenged with that. The, as I read these engineering letters, and I'm not a mechanical engineer, but I'm an engineer, these look like something that I would write when I'm proposing on something. I'm starting to assess and beginning to understand something. These aren't providing guarantees because the design hasn't been done. So there's going to be some uncertainty. There's going to be some phraseology that's going to be less than concrete. And even so, this is a dynamic system and many people maybe don't want to hear this, but in many cases, engineering isn't the exact science we'd like it to be. It is an art. It is subjective. I see the other engineers at the podium smiling. So it's, but that's where the trial and error comes into play. And I do believe there is going to be some trial and error. And I do believe that we have the ability to continually check to improve upon it. Those are some of my comments as far as the concerns that I'm hearing.
Well, that's the point I make in reading the report. And a report that's given to me from an engineer that I would read, that it's a best guess right now. And so that's why I want to try to look at an establishment of a quicker set of time because this best guess, you won't know, you'll have to give it some time. It's not something you can just say, we put it up, flip the switch and go test. It's going to be something that's got to go over weekends and how it goes. So that's why I'd like, when I look at design, I like things that are established in place that are not mechanical systems. Mechanical systems fail. And so you can use your best engineering and take your best shot at it, but, and I worry about into the future. So I guess that's the other question I had for staff or counsel. How long, if we put an implementation every six months or whatever timeframe it looks at, how long could that go? Is that until forever this business lasts? Or because how, the issue is like these smoke eaters, I've installed them into, into places myself. They only work if you keep them clean. If they don't keep clean, they just move air. They don't do anything. So.
Chairman Ailer and Commission and residents, the town of Gilbert is pro-business, as many of the commissioners have already suggested here and truly believe. The town council has directed staff to be very fair and kind servants to our residents. And that includes truly understanding businesses as they grow and change, truly understanding the concerns of our residents and trying to mitigate them to the best of our ability. Gilbert, our mayor and council and top management has not directed us to shut down businesses, has not directed us to put a hold on mitigation measures until there's an absolute scientific proof. So an example would be this. The commission has approved use permits for schools and we do the very best we can along with engineers who prepare traffic studies and circulation plans and peak hours. And the commission does their very best to understand the needs of neighboring community, of the neighbors who have or could be impacted with moms and dads picking up their children and dropping them off at peak hours. There are times where that circulation plan, even though approved by the traffic engineer fails, during that time, there is no direction from the, from the commission here to go back out every 30 days or 60 or every six months, but we do. So even if, even if a traffic study fails, it is our responsibility to the public, to the business owner and to, to the safety of our community that we follow up on use permits and modify them as needed and make those changes. So one of the conditions that we regularly tagged on use permits for schools and their traffic studies was to provide an annual update to the traffic engineer. So even if it doesn't change, it's an opportunity just to check in. And that's an opportunity that would be similar in this case. However, I do believe that because it's new, a new situation to use technology, that I think it is reasonable that after installation of the equipment that staff is directed to report back to the commission in 60 days, after the equipment, the milestone, the equipment is installed, to report back to you and see how things are going. And then, of course, if there's any complaints, even without that condition, the public still has the right and should be vocal about something they feel could be improved or should be improved. And that's what we have staff for. We have inspectors, we have fire inspectors, we have building code inspectors, we have code compliance folks. So we have a range of staff that meets the public needs. So I urge you not to be overly specific in the technical aspects because this is a business that has been running for years with no mitigation. This is an opportunity to do the best we can to see this, to see this company succeed.
Thank you. I guess the question or statement I make to that is I see it as established business, but I still don't find that it's an established patio. I see the two declarations, but I still have heavy questions on the established patio. Two, a declaration from an employee and from someone who leases the property doesn't hold as much weight to me.
Commission and, Chairman and Commissioners, I have, I have personal experience with this company, not only because I know it well, because it's in our community like many other businesses, but also this was a growing center until the recession hit and some of the businesses were not complete. There are still some structures that are not complete. So at the time that the shopping center was struggling, this business, this business continues to succeed and I was well aware of that. So I am very familiar with the center and its patrons and it's been a very active business. I'm just, you know, putting my two cents in for personal knowledge of the business.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bloomfield?
I, I'm an engineer. And when I go to develop a piece of property or do the engineering on it, I have to look at the drainage conditions and, and whatever's running off of that site, I can't increase that. And I think that some, given the discussion tonight, we have to agree that this business is there, it's functioning, it's somewhat grandfathered in, quote unquote, to be able to function in the way that it has. Because they want to expand, we have to look at it from a pre versus post, at least it seems fair to me, to look at it as a pre versus post condition. Prior to this expansion, they were functioning. We have to establish a level of what that means. My guess is that many times with the mitigation measures that they're making, that the increase will be taken care of plus more taken out, you know? And anything that they do is going to be better than what it currently is. And I, I just have to say, in the sense of fairness, we have to give them a chance to go through this. But at the same time, there has to be, it seems reasonable to set an established level of saying, this is what it was allowed to be. The expansion's going to add some to it. We want you to mitigate at least that much. And so there has to be some testing done right away to figure out what that threshold is. And then the staff will take care of making sure that it's, the conditions are being met throughout the terms of the conditional use permit.
I don't disagree with the logic and the fact that the proposition is fair. But improvements have been made to the patio, if I'm not mistaken, TVs, misters, an awning. How do you measure how much it was being used before? And how do you measure how much, what the new amount of smoke is? I think it's all very subjective and I, I don't know how we overcome that.
I guess we're at a, at a point now. I guess just my, my main hangup is how we deal with controls. I mean, that's, if it was easy enough to close off the section to the north, east and just push all that out the front, that'd be easy. But that's not what we're doing. I do want to try to give this established business a chance in that they're located. Like I said, I still don't find a findings that the patio was 100% established, but if we are trying to create something that controls and we can set guidelines for staff to measure the smoke and the noise and employees, because they are stepping forward, things that they don't have to do for the neighbors right now is the employee parking, the lower, well, the noise probably is something they ultimately have to do, but I think this is, we can take a shot. I just, one, I guess defer to one of our engineers on how we would want to establish all these conditions and, or do we just go forward with the eight conditions, set a timeframe and knowing, and knowing the applicant, understanding that if it doesn't get met, that highly chance of revocation of the use permit.
So as, as one of your engineers, and I am an engineer, I am not the right kind of engineer, but I am an engineer. So I agree. I think that, I think we're down to that because we've gone through it enough. I think this business needs an opportunity to try to do these things. So let's set a timeframe. And what I heard Linda say is that we shouldn't be overly zealous in setting a bunch of criteria. I think we need to let the staff sort through, sort through whether or not the, the conditions of the permit are being met, which are outlined in those eight points. And so I think at this point, having read those points, Nicole's descriptions were good, I think we can move forward at this point, given that this is just a use permit process, and impose those eight points, let staff evaluate if they believe they've been met. And if they've not been met and the business owner chooses not to go any further, that they draw the line and say, we're just done trying, then we revisit. And I think it comes back to us. But I'm afraid if we set too many criteria, we're going to put staff through so many hurdles now that there's, it's just too much of a burden on staff then. So, and at this point, I'm not smart enough on what an olfactometer level ought to be at a property line. So we can't set that. But I don't have the awareness of that.
Well, the other change to that condition, and I don't know how we would establish this, is more into the backyard, I mean, at the property line, which would be great if it's zero line, but there's a lofting factor definitely when, I mean, the comment comes, I live nowhere near a dairy and I can tell you on a Sunday afternoon, I can smell the dairy randomly and I don't even know which one.
Well, and that's, again, you would not want to try to test this on a windy day or on a, you know, on a Monday afternoon when nobody's there, right? You're going to want to test it on a Friday night or a Saturday night at 10:00 PM where there's no wind. Sure, you just certainly want to do that. I mean, you get too close to McDonald's, you're smelling McDonald's on the wrong day, right? right? So, so, yeah, I think you do have to be wise in the way you test. And, and again, I don't think we need to set those specifications. I think staff can logically work that out. So unless there's any other points to the eight conditions that anyone had, and I know there was one discussion that, that Commissioner Muti had, and, and I don't, I don't know if we want to pursue that or if we want to just leave it as written. But I think I'm, I'm ready to move towards, towards implementing the eight conditions, letting staff evaluate once implemented, encourage the applicant to accelerate their processes of design and, and implementation, and, and I don't know that, that it's necessarily crucial that we set a time on that and that we let this, this applicant give it a shot.
Well, I would, I agree, but I would just, I guess, not as a stipulation, but encourage staff to review this in 60 days as it's in the recommendation and take a, a continual review of this.
Keep in mind, the, the plans will be submitted in 60 days by the property, business owner.
Right.
I, I think we need a parameter put on it, some, some sort of.
Just for, for submittal? For submittal, you mean?
Submittal, and, and how long are building permits open? A year? I mean, you could, you could pull a permit and start construction 364 days later.
Right.
And, and I don't know if we're overstepping. Please chime in i- if we are, but I, I think some.
I can give you a general.
Go ahead.
Basically, in situations like this, there's so many of us staff already working with the Fox cigar team that they are in touch with us regularly, and we don't stop working with them until the job is done. So we don't let something sit. That is just what we do when we're trying to bring a, a project up to speed and when they're implementing a use permit. So if you would like to put 60 days on there, it's certainly a reasonable timeframe, and that doesn't mean it'll be done in 60 days, but it'll certainly will be continuing to work with them on whatever that time factor is, but it'll be in our hands. In fact, I think it'll be in our hands before 60 days, way before 60 days. That was just their efforts to say maximum. I mean, we're already working with their team on, on what they need to do. They're just getting the, the final plans set with this use permit to finalize the construction of the additional equipment.
Okay, yeah, my, my, mine's not actually per the permit because, right, they're going to go forward, they're going to do it, but it's more of this final end testing. As you mentioned, just watching traffic patterns annually, there's going to be code enforcement, there, there's a whole levels of staff that this could come to. I'm just more making sure that it's put in the record that we'd like to have staff maybe take special view of this a little longer or shorter timeframes.
Chairman Ayler, I could reference what the mayor and council does with our staff, and that is they direct staff to give them a report on the project in two months or three months, and then sometimes we give the report at a study session so that it doesn't have to, you know, be on a public hearing. So we can regularly come back to you with updates per your direction. It doesn't, in fact, you can direct us at the June hearing to come back to you with a update on any project. It doesn't have to be conditioned to the project. We're happy to come back with you as, on a regular basis until you are convinced that things are going smoothly.
Okay. Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's a good way to go. So let's hear it in June? No. No, let's go if you want to make a motion.
Well, I, I, before we go to the motion, I am just curious, to, to me, the word eliminate is, is a zero tolerant word, and if we're going to have articulated recommendations that we intend on enforcing and following through with, I want to have something that is within the realm of reality. I don't think eliminate is in the, in the realm of reality. And if, if it's significantly reduced or, or some other verbiage.
I, my support to this is that the neighbors don't smell it. I mean, that's, I mean, I agree, eliminate is a very hard point to hit, but to reduce is, is too wide open, too.
So a neighbor six houses down could be smoking a cigar in their backyard.
Yeah.
You can't smell that.
Wow.
You can't eliminate all smells from, from all surrounding users.
I completely agree.
But you can improve a situation.
Nobody's told the dairy to, well, there's, there's people who've wished the dairy to shut down, but they aren't going to be able to pull that one off. I, I'm not sure that we can do that.
To Commissioner Muti's point, I think maybe, maybe we can do and still meet the intent is, is rather than say eliminate the odors, but to reach an established level of odor established by staff. So let them figure out what that ought to be and set that, and, and hopefully it's very low. I don't even know what to say it ought to be, but I think eliminate is a hard, hard bar.
This is staff's recommendation to eliminate the odor, right?
Mr. Chair Commission, that, that's correct. If the commission wanted to wordsmith the, the conditions, the impact on residents, at least in condition four, is measured on a, on a reasonableness standard. Staff and council suggests that you may want to consider inserting the word reasonable or reasonably, reasonably eliminate to odor trespass. That gives a little bit of leeway while still providing more of a bright line that doesn't insert a lot of vagueness and subjectivity to the extent that we can eliminate that from the situation.
I would say vagueness as defined by who or what.
Yeah, so what's reasonable to the residents is not going to be reasonable, or may not be reasonable to the business owner and vice versa. I, I still see a lot of subjectivity with any type of measurement, and if, if we're going to, if, if we're going to proceed, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change what staff has suggested here. That's my two cents worth.
Commissioner Bloomfield.
At the very beginning, Commissioner Sipple made a statement. I can't get, I can't get there on items one and four. We've had a lot of discussion, but we haven't discussed that much. Are we able to meet the findings of fact on this new CUP?
Well, I think in elimination of smoke odor control noise, I mean, that's what all this establishes. If, if all this works, then, in my viewpoint, then we've met those facts. But that's where my key point is, it has to not affect the neighbors. And, and so that's where my, where I view how we pass the four findings of fact is by all this that we're doing engineering wise, but the engineering has to work.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't know what the end goal's going to be here, but I always enjoy when we have items like this at the DIAHS. It's good conversation. Yeah, I think we're all wondering what to say next, honestly. And I, I'm not willing to make a motion.
If, if you're, if we feel we're ready, I'll, I'll make a motion, but I don't want to cut off any further debate.
Well, I guess the, I think the last piece of the debate is the, the wordsmith of, of the finding of fact, or the finding of reasonably eliminate or eliminate.
I think the use of the word reasonably follows the direction that we're hearing from staff and from town council in, in the spirit of how Gilbert wants to interact with its citizens and businesses. I think reasonably is a, is a reasonable parameter by definition.
Success through vagueness, right?
Mr. Chair Commission, from council's perspective, the word reasonably eliminate, or the phrase reasonably eliminate would require every effort to eliminate the smell from leaving the property, but would allow for some leeway for factors that may be beyond the control of the property owner, like a windy day, for instance, or, you know, something that just can't be controlled at all times. That, that's where reasonably eliminate in council's view would, would come into play. So you would still have that bright line of elimination with a little bit of a safe harbor.
And so we're looking at adding the word reasonably.
That, that is the direction I would.
Because my, my last point, and then we'll make a motion, is you could reasonably control this by putting the wall at 16 feet and closing the back half, and that would ultimately control the space. So that's your final reasonable action, that you would not be relied on smoke eaters, you would not be relied on fans. So, I mean, is that a reasonable portion? I mean, would that fall into that reasonable, reasonable controls to eliminate? I guess I'm asking.
Well, number, number three says a tobacco mitigation odor plan to include a combination of ventilation fans, smoke eaters, filtering systems, and so forth. So, so within the conditions, it talks about what the mitigation plan consists of to approach that reasonable elimination.
Well, right. What I'm saying, does the word reasonable allow, I'm, I, I know I'm getting way into the weeds on this, but is that control, I, I still have issues that I really don't know if these smoke eaters are going to work. You can blow fans to them. It's hard to control smoke, and I, I've designed many things. I've designed hookah lounges, I've designed a lot of different things that dealt with smoke. It's, even indoors, it's hard to control that type of thing. And then when it goes through the smoke eater, then it goes through the charcoal, it, it's just, you're not even taking it 100% at that point, you're taking it 90 whatever percent. So the control factor is, what I'm saying is, gets to a reasonable, if the smoke eaters don't work, the fans don't work, does reasonable say, okay, we took our best shot? And the, 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 the key issue is then, you got to build a solid wall and close it in and let it, all the smoke go towards the commercial side and let the smoke eaters work there, but then you're not, that's the full chance at elimination.
And that could be considered unreasonable by the business owner.
That's my question, is that unreasonable?
We, I, I, we may get to that day, and I look forward to that debate, but, but let's get to that.
Well, that's, I mean, I, my issue is eliminate versus reasonably.
So I'll, I'll jump in here. I, I, through this discussion, you've convinced me that I will, I will, I would approve the CUP based on exactly the way staff has it here. I won't entertain any other verbiage. If, if we add anything to it, I can't support it.
We don't have to have unanimous support.
No, but you'd have to have four.
Majority, I know, I know.
So may I ask, though, so how would you, how would you accommodate, as, as we were given some legal advice, or how would you accommodate a windy day? I mean, you, you could have smoke go over the wall on a, on a blustery day, and, and it hasn't been met then.
Close in the wall, raise it 16.
Well, no, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, 98, 95 out of 100 days is perfectly fine, but you get a little blushed and, and all of a sudden, whoop, I can, I can smell it. I mean, is that, is that fair? Is that appropriate?
No, and then that's why I'm, why I'm asking the question, why I got to that point in design, and so that's why I put it out there.
Yeah. No, I, I think reasonable is an absolute fair way to address this, to, to require elimination, but definitely give the caveat for some things out of their control. I really think that is an appropriate and fair response to this. I mean, we are still requiring elimination, that is the word. But, but yeah, it's, it's one of those things where, I mean, you have, you know, the dairy, to, to make them live by this, you couldn't, you're going to get a windy day, you know? I mean, we can't make every McDonald's abide by that. You're going to get a windy day, you're going to get, you know, one day they're going to burn the fries, and you're going to smell them. So I don't know. I, I really think that's a great idea, and I, I would encourage us to go that way, and I would hope we could get, I appreciate your willingness to support it in, in that fashion. I would hope maybe we could come together for reasonable, too.
With, with the chair's consent, I'd, I'll, I'll float a motion out there. I would include the word reasonable, and if it goes, it goes, and if it doesn't, then we, we have a fallback route.
Good. If we, if we change the verbiage, is that enough to have for a revote?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Can I just remind the commission that having six members tonight requires four votes, a tied vote, a motion with a tied vote would fail.
Right.
So, so are we reasonably eliminating, or are we making a reasonable effort? Where does reasonable get placed? I think that's worth discussing. It doesn't change my opinion, though. It would be, it would be the word reasonably inserted in between the words that eliminate to read that reasonably eliminate.
As defined by?
As defined by council's legal advice earlier. So I'm not an expert at reading body language, and I, I love that we have six people when we get to these really good ones, so. Are, are we ready, or do you want to discuss more? Make a motion, move to make a findings of fact and approve U.P. 15 dash 04 Fox cigar bar, a conditional use permit to allow a standalone smoking lounge in a portion of a multi-tenant building existing on approximately 2.67 acres of real property located at 1464 East Williams Field Road and the shopping center zoning district with a planned area development overlay, subject to the eight conditions in the staff report, amending condition three to read that reasonably eliminate.
I second.
I have a motion for approval based on the conditions set forth by Commissioner Muti, a second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And any opposed?
Nay.
So passes four to two. And so the four that pass is commu, I, for in favor is Commissioner Muti, Commissioner Cavany, Chairman Ayler, and Commissioner Bloomfield. But I would definitely recommend staff to visit this highly. Thank you. And thank you for coming out. Item number 16, LDC. So, or no, yeah, there's item 16Z 14 dash 15 dash E.
I can't, can't, good, can't.
Do you see it on here?
Not with the way that those four items, those conditions. I think it would seem different. And if you're measuring, are they addressing? Maybe. I mean, I would have, I would have proved it on the staff recommendation. It's the, it's the.
Oh, the, the.
Anyway.
That's bizarre. Where is it? Is there a folder here with, is this a folder?
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, I was, well, I was.
No, that's not here.
Okay.
Nope, this, this must have been the older one, but, you know, I do have my iPad with In an, in an effort to save time.
Be here all night.
Okay, well, I was going to say, I can easily bring my iPad over. Is that my iPad? Thank you. Okay. I guess my presentation was not downloaded, and if it is, I can't find it. I'll just go ahead and hook up my. Just sorry about this delay. I thought it was already on the desktop here. Do I need technical help from our staff? I'm trying to hook up my iPad. Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Lynda Edwards, Planning Manager. I'm stepping in for Catherine this evening, she is not here. You did review the land development text amendment to modify some of the membership criteria for the design review board, and also a couple of items for the administrative design review process. We did take this project to the design review board, they reviewed it, and they also believe that there should be some changes to that. These are just some slides to show you that this is one of the batches of a larger text amendment for the land development code. We've already processed several batches, and I'm going to be talking about the one that is moving forward this evening for recommendation. That is the design review board membership, which we believe is a better mix at the council's pleasure to now have a combination of a civil engineer, a landscape architect, an architect other than a landscape architect, someone from the construction, construction industry, and it could be a lighting expert, it could be a developer, it could be someone that is familiar with land development, a business owner or real estate broker, and a private citizen. We have had all of these players on the design review board in the past, and every one of them has been a great addition to the design review board. And then, for the design review administrative responsibilities, we believe with your discussion and the design review board discussion, that it would be a good idea to keep business rolling when a business wants to expand in our community up to 50%. When you reviewed it, you had questioned what that magic number should be. The design review board discussed it and agreed that 50% was about all they felt comfortable with before it came back to them for review. And then what you see also in uppercase bold there is open space plans, less than 20 acres would be approved by staff. That's already happening, that's just a clarification. So this slide here just talks about what we recently approved at the design review board. Of course, it had to go through a hearing process, which took time. This was the actual project that shows a, a building was expanded by about one-third in on an existing site plan with all the same architecture, which we agree and design review board agrees, could have been handled administratively. That's just a very recent real example of why we feel that we are requesting your recommendation for approval to provide a new combination for the criteria for the board's membership and the ability to approve building expansions in the employment district. The employment districts consist of business park, light industrial, and general industrial. Those are usually very large buildings and campus development, and usually very well screened. And then, of course, to clarify, the administrative review for 20 acres or less. And I just put those notes up there in case you had questioned, what else do we review at administrative level? And there's our list that we work from, if you have any questions.
I appreciate the work that staff's put together on this. The only personal question I ask, I, I still wonder what, what's another architect other than an architect and a landscape architect? But that's just a question. But it's not, it's just rhetorical. And why isn't it architect, landscape, and then other than architect, landscape? No, put the architect first.
What happened to my screen here? Let me go back to that page so we can take a look at it. I know, are you teasing me, or are you really?
Yes, I'm just teasing you.
Okay, because I was gonna say, I will try to come up with the most intelligent.
Absolutely, I, I like the wording that staff's put in there, it works just fine.
Mr. Chair, are you trying to emphasize that you are not an engineer?
Yes, I'm not an engineer.
So Lynda, just, on your last slide, you talked about currently, I believe, is DRB considers all expansions or new builds up to 3,000 square feet, and now we're saying it's going to be that plus any addition that is no more than 50% of the original building, right?
Only in the employment district for the three zoning districts, business park, light industrial, and general industrial. So those are those fairly massive warehouse-type buildings, and then also campus development, and only when there's an approved site plan.
Okay, so it, it could get to be a pretty good-sized building.
Yes, it could.
Okay, okay, but that's, I imagine that's fine because it would most often replicate the same architecture and so forth, I imagine, so, okay, that's all I had.
Keep in mind, Chair, that any project can be bumped to the design review board if we feel there's complications.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, just curious. So does this new consistency of, of different experiences, experience levels, or experience types, on the, does that necessitate a change in the board? Are we going to have to lose some board members and repopulate, or are we gonna let attrition just take care of the new constituency?
That is a very good question, and yes, there would be change over time, but there's a very key word in the mix, and it says a combination. So therefore, as long as there is a combination of, I'm trying to get to that page there, sorry, of, of those professions on that list, so those on the board will not be bumped, but it gives the council an opportunity to look for these professions to be on the board to serve our community. Keep in mind that the application itself is also very specific about the desired level of experience and, or even including a private citizen. We have a wonderful, wonderful mix of residents in our community who are very good at what they do, or they're retired, and they have offered good experience to our board, and they may not be one of the professions noted above.
So really, you could have six civil engineers, one landscape architect, and no architects, right?
You could.
Okay.
But we have a very intelligent mayor and council, and they've been able to maintain a quite, quite a wonderful mix of public officials throughout how many boards and commissions we have. I can't even imagine, I mean, Councilmember Peterson, how many volunteers do we have in our community on boards and commissions, 50, 60, 70?
Well, there are approximately 18 boards and commissions currently, and they range from one or two members up to, I think, nine members?
We could have, we could have between 150 and 200 public officials appointed by our mayor and council, and everyone is, is a valuable addition to our community.
Lynda, I would, I would agree with that, and I would also agree that the mayor and council do an excellent job at appointing and reappointing members to boards and commissions.
I second that.
Taking this harder than it really should be.
Okay, all right. So are we looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So is there anybody out in the public that wishes to speak?
Chairman?
Yes.
I can add for you today that the town council received an email from the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, and that their public policy committee reviewed this and are in favor of it.
Great, even better. Okay, so, anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm.
Okay, I've closed the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for discussion and motion. Motion.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve Z 14-15-E, request to amend the town of Gilbert Land Development Code, Chapter One, Zoning Regulations, Division Five Administration, Article 5.1, Planning Administration, Section 5.108 Design Review Board, related to board membership requirements, and Article 5.6 Design Review, Section 5.602, Procedures and Responsibilities related to Administrative Design Review for Building Expansions and Subdivision Open Space Plans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Sipple, a second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. That brings us to administrative items. Item number 17 is the minutes for consider approval for the April 1st study session and regular meeting. Do we have any changes to the meeting minutes, anyone?
No. Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes as presented to us.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Commissioner Bloomfield, a second from Vice Chair Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0.
But I.
Oh, well, passes 5-0 with.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so I can't vote on those, or second them.
Okay. That brings us to communications, item 18, report from chairman and planning commission on current events. No, no current events. I think we've had a, a current event today in getting through that last, that last set of session. So, well, it brings us to a report from Council Aleson.
Gentlemen, I want to tell you that I appreciate the reasonably thorough discussion that you gave tonight on your cases. I couldn't resist, I'm sorry. You did a great job, that wasn't an easy case, and you did a really great job, and especially for not having Commissioner Whitman up there to kind of crack the whip a little bit, because I think she would have. I just want to mention, I always like to mention, we always seem to meet on the first Wednesday of May, when Joe's Row BBQ holds their free meal for the day as customer appreciation, because we tend to all miss it, because we're busy doing other things, and they served 5,866 free meals today.
Wow.
At Joe's Row BBQ. And they've done it every year that they've been open, I think that was 1998, if I'm correct. So I'm just thankful to have them in our community, because I think it's awesome that at almost 240,000 people, we have a restaurant that does something like that and offers something like that to our residents. I also wanted to mention that Gilbert, Arizona, was, our, our credit rating was raised a week or two ago to AAA. It's the highest possible rating that you can have as a community. There's 19,000 cities in the country, and only 179 hold the AAA credit rating, and Gilbert is one of them. And we are just one of four in Arizona, the other three being Scottsdale, Paradise Valley, and Chandler. So I think that's really something to be celebrated. The month of May is Gilbert Feeding Families. If anybody's interested, we are holding a food drive for the whole month. There are bins here at the municipal center, you can pick them up to take to your own businesses or churches if you want, and I think it goes in conjunction with the planning commission especially, because we're collecting, trying to collect, our goal is 72,600 meals. That's 1,000 meals per square miles in Gilbert, which is 72.6 square miles, so I always, you know, try to connect that to us as a planning commission. And then I wanted to share that next Thursday evening, since Vice Chairman Sipple brought up how the council does such a great job of appointing members to our boards and commissions, next Thursday evening, May 14th, the Gilbert Town Council has on their agenda to do the new appointments for the planning commission, with 14 applicants, including many of you. They have been reviewed, and we'll make that decision during that meeting at some time, I would assume, since it's on our, our agenda currently. And then for my personal note, I am on the board for the Gilbert Leadership Program, which is a leadership program run by the Chamber of Commerce, and tomorrow evening, from 5:00 to 6:00, we'll be holding a meet and greet at the Brunswick Zone across the street. If anybody's interested in attending that, please feel free to come and learn about the program if you're, if you would, if you think you might be interested in doing it this year, or maybe even in the future. And then we'll be having an alumni social, and it's a great time to mingle with the people that have already gone through the program in the past. So that's all I have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Commissioner Sipple.
I did forget, I, I did have something I wanted to share. It is also National Teacher Appreciation Week, and so, as you know, I'm an educator at heart, and so I want to congratulate all those teachers out there and educators that work tirelessly throughout the school year, which is also coming to a close. That's why we're appreciating teachers here towards the end, so happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Brings item 20, report from Planning Service Manager, Lynda Edwards.
I just have one item to let you know that the town council did recognize your efforts with the Santan character area update, and approved the chapter at the last council hearing, and thanks you for your efforts on that.
Thank you. And that adjourns our meeting for tonight.